We're good. Thumbs up. Thank you all for your patience. We are officially online. So if we can call this meeting to order, may we have a roll call vote, please, of call, please?
Commissioner Adam Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Green. Commissioner Hank Hughes.
Present.
Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone.
Present.
And Chair Camila Bustamante.
Present. Thank you. Let's do the, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the West and to one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. State of Mexico.
Perfect symbol, perfect friendship among united cultures.
Land acknowledgement. This Santa Fe County building is located on the traditional homelands of the Tewa people at the place still known as Oga Poge, White Shell Watering Place. We honor the land itself with all those who have deep connections to the land, as Santa Fe County is committed to being in relationship with the neighboring communities and all people who remain stewards of this land throughout generations. Next on our agenda, we have the Moment of Reflection, John Baker.
Let us take a moment to focus on the work ahead of us today. Let us be ever mindful of our decisions and in the best interest of our community. Let us take a moment of silence.
Manager Schaefer, do we have any items that have been changed in the agenda as submitted?
Chair Bustamante and Commissioners, the only recommended change from staff to the agenda as presented is that, given the board's action at the reconvene special meeting, we will not be needing item 11A4 on executive session. Otherwise, no other changes to the agenda as presented. And I'd simply note that the initial agenda was posted last Tuesday, and the amended agenda was posted Friday, August 22, at approximately 2:00 p.m., which is more than 72 hours before today's meeting as required by the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as provided or approve with the recommendation to remove item 41A4, which is no longer needed?
Prove as recommended. Second?
We have a motion to approve the agenda as recommended. We're removing item four. We have a sec, by Commissioner Johnson. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda has been approved. Years of service, retirements, and new hires. Recognition, the county manager's office, Commissioner, I mean, Manager Schaefer.
Thank you, Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. Wanted to take a few moments to acknowledge both new hires as well as those who are celebrating significant milestones, and then finally those who are retiring and moving on to the next chapter of their lives and potential careers. I'll start with new hires. Wanted to again acknowledge that Jonathan Butler has joined the county team as the Community Development Department Director, and Latoya Ricketts has joined the county team as the Executive Director of our Housing Authority Division. Pleased to see that management team be rounded out and look forward to working with them. In our Corrections Department, we had Jared Gallegos join the team as a registered nurse, and two new detention officers, Adriana Montoya and Jonathan Paramedina. And in addition, in the County Clerks Department, Julie Rasmussen, I believe, joined the county as an administrative assistant. In the Public Works Department, we welcome Equipment Operator Julio Lican Shavira, I believe, and two new hires. In our Utilities Department, Dalton Holder and Joel Murray. In the Public Works Department also, our new ASD Director, Isaiah Martinez, has joined the team. And we have a Public Works Program Specialist, Ha Pham, I believe. And finally, in the County Manager's Office, Carlton Simmons has joined the team as Department Administrator. In terms of individuals who are celebrating significant anniversaries with the county, Emma Felton, in the County Manager's Office, is celebrating five years of consecutive service with the county. In our Community Services Department, Nancy Smith is celebrating 10 years during the month of August with the county, and Ivan Berry in the County Assessors Department is likewise celebrating 10 years with the county. So pleased that their commitment to us continues to reflect the county as an employer of choice. Finally, wanted to acknowledge that during the month of July, Jared Rivera retired from the Public Works Department and the Road Maintenance Division after having served the county and the community for almost 24 consecutive years. And then finally, forgive me as I skip back to new hires, last but not least, I neglected to mention that we did have two volunteer firefighters who are now in a position to respond to events and therefore are recognized on our role as volunteer firefighters. They are Autumn Castanada and Lindsay Fuller. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Are there any words that anyone would like to share with the new hires or those who are leaving us? Commissioner Green?
Welcome and thank you for everybody that's been here, and congratulations for those that achieved retirement. May we all get to retire at least once.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? I want to thank everyone who has given service to Santa Fe County and the new hires who are about to give their service to the county. As we are here to serve community, that's why we exist, and it is our community that looks to us as an entity that provides services such as utility, roads, et cetera, safety, name it. And I hope and look forward to working with each and every one of you in the interest of supporting your efforts in your job, knowing that you're here to serve and yes, hopefully someday get a really nice retirement. Thank you. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
I just want to thank our management team for always just working really hard to recruit new people and to retain and promote professional growth and development. And as they say, public service is public trust. So thank you for help bringing that. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Onto item I, recognition of employees for awards, accreditations, recognitions, and other accomplishments. Manager Schaefer?
Thank you, Chair Bustamante. Wanted to recognize that our Santa Fe County Clerk, Catherine Clark, has successfully completed the Certified Elections Registration Administrator, CERA, program. I'm told this is the highest professional achievement available to election officials in the United States. It's a multi-year program taught by Auburn University's Master of Public Administration faculty and administered by the Election Center. It's been described to me as the gold standard, and, gold standard, excuse me, in election administration training. So Clerk Clark is one of only two currently serving county clerks in New Mexico to hold this prestigious certification. Nationwide, there are approximately 1,700 election officials who have attained the CERA status. So congratulations to Clerk Clark on this accomplishment. And that's all in terms of recognition of employees for awards, accreditations, and other accomplishments. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Manager Schaefer. Any comments from the Commission? Commissioner Hughes?
Well, congratulations to Clerk Clark. I'm sure she worked hard. Thank you.
Anyway, Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Clerk Clark deserves a lot of accolades. Having just walked over and processed something with the clerk's office, they were spot on, unbelievably professional, moved everybody through, made sure everything was complete, and she's got a great operation over there. So, good job, Cat.
Thank you, Commissioner. I too want to extend congratulations to Clerk Clark, and we're grateful for her service to the state. Thank you. Or to our county, I'm sorry. Freud. Oh yeah, she serves on the National Board. My apologies. She serves not just to the state but to the country. So we're grateful for her good work. Thank you. Approval of meeting minutes. Requesting approval of the July 29, 2025 Board of County Commission Meeting Minutes.
Madam Chair, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Johnson?
I second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Kokari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The meeting minutes from July 29 are approved. Consideration of Commissioner proclamations, resolutions, recognitions, there are none. Onto the consent agenda. From, to the commission, is there anything that anyone would like to see pulled for discussion from the consent agenda?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented by Commissioner Green.
I second it.
We have a second by Commissioner Kokari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda has been approved, and there are no resolution numbers.
There's one, Chair.
What? My eyes aren't working.
The first one.
These eyes need some fixing.
Item A is Resolution Number 2025090.
Thank you very much. All right. The consent agenda has been approved, and that is 090. Appointments and reappointments. This is an action item. Request appointment of a member to the Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy Council from District 5. We'll be hearing from Leila Shadabi. Welcome, Leila.
Is it on? Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I am Leila Shadabi, Economic Development Specialist, Community Development Department. This item is being presented to Board of County Commissioner to request appointment of one member to the Arts, Culture, and Creative Economy, ACC Council, to fill the district type vacancy. On December, just like a brief background of that, on December 9, 2024, the Board adopted Resolution Number 2024167, which is Exhibit A in this memo, in this item, establishing the ACC Council and 11-member volunteer body composed of two representatives from each district, each Commissioner, Commission District, and one at large member. And the council advises the county on strategy, strategies to support and grow creative sector meet monthly, is developing a five-year, year art and culture plan, and provide quarterly report to the Board. All meetings comply with public notice and open meeting laws. Since March 2025, the ACC Council has met monthly and made progress toward the five-year strategic plan. On July 3, 2025, a District 5 member resigned. The staff issued press release dated July 11, 2025, soliciting letter of interest from vacancy, and received two letter of interest and resume, which is Exhibit B. The staff now seeks, seeks Board appointment to fill the District 5 seat. The list of appointment, the list of actually applicant and the resumes are in Exhibit B, but in summary, I can tell you that we have actually two candidate. One of them is Mr. Rudy Benz and then Ms. Judy Reinhardt, if I'm correcting. Mr. Rudy Benz has a Doctorate of Education. He's a writer, musician, theater director, actor, producer, and he has experience in films, art, and 12 years working with Native Americans. He is multidisciplinary artist. He is a community-focused educator with extensive work with Native Americans. His educational background supports creative vision and strategic thinking. He's experienced collector with working across sectors like art, education, and social services. Ms. Judy Reinhardt, she has a PhD in education, and she's a former professor of UTEP. Judy has lots of, she's actually a meritius professor. She has lots of work and experience in public school and services in communities in Texas and New Mexico. She has significant amount of work on art, integrated in education, community-based, and public art project that like public art in college, high-fronted, like in actually, public art in roundabout in one place in Santa Fe. Support arts in community program likes work with Institute of American Indian Arts, leadership in education and nonprofit, like she was a member of Board, Board actually leadership as an experience. She is a good candidate for being educator, community engagement, and cultural development. Madam Chair and Commissioner Hughes, I stand here if you have any question, and our request is actually appointing one of these two candidates, applicants.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Shadabi? Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you so much for recruiting great candidates, and their credentials seem really impressive. Just a quick question, does Dr. Reinhardt's, does she actually live in Santa Fe?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Both of them are living in District 5 and out of city as resolution mentioned. Yes.
Just checking, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
So somewhat related, I understand there's an opening in District 1, is that correct?
We have another one who was resigned from, just recently, he resigned from District 1, and I sent you an email and asked you how you would, he would, how you would like that I process that.
Okay. Thank you for confirming that. Great, thanks.
Nothing further? Do we have a motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, I move that we appoint Rudy Benz to the Arts and Culture Creative Economy Council.
Thank you so much.
He has slightly more experience in the arts than the other person, and I think Dr. Shababi, Dr. Shadabi, and I talked about it and decided he was the best candidate.
Thank you so much.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion to approve Mr. Benz. We have a second by Commissioner Hughes. We have a second by Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Miscellaneous action items. The first, item A, a resolution establishing the La Canyada de los Alamos Planning Committee and authorizing a community planning process for the community. Nate Krail and Joseph Scala. Hi, Nate.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I'm before you today to initiate a community planning process for the La Canyada de los Alamos community. So the subject resolution just requests approval to initiate the process as well as establish the initial planning committee, and I'll work with the CEO of the community, the La Canyada de los Alamos Community Association, the CEO for La Canyada, to work on a public participation plan, to have a broad community outreach as we go through the community planning process in the next year and a half or so. In the exhibits, you can see the proposed boundary for the community planning area, which is the same boundary you approved for the community organization back in April of this year. And in addition, the Community Association, two of their members are in the audience for any questions you may have, but I stand for any questions about this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Krail. Do we have any questions for Nate, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Nate, for helping this community along. This is an important step for La Canyada de los Alamos, to be able to advocate for themselves and have an entity, an organizing system for their, for their community plans, for their vision for the future. This is an area that is sort of accessed by one road, or at least one road tends to be very popular, and the community has felt that it has not been consulted for access. And I think that this is an important way for them to represent themselves. I wholly support this, and I appreciate your work in organizing with them. I want to also note that there are other important issues, such as water availability that affect this region, and I think this will be a useful vehicle for connecting the community to one another in an area with limited cell service and now no one has landlines. And so I think this is a really great step forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Any further comments? I also want to note that Canyada de los Alamos is a historic, is a traditional historic community. It's not the historic portion of the legislation, but it is a community that was established prior to U.S. occupation, at least 250 years prior to U.S. occupation. So it's good to see that the community is strengthening itself and will continue with now its self-defining through the planning process, and I appreciate your leadership, Nate, for that reason. Commissioner Johnson, this is your...
Madam Chair, I'd like to, oh...
I'm sorry, Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you. I just want to take this moment, Nate, that you're in front of us in this public space, to really thank you for your deep and broad community engagement expertise and skill sets. I saw you work very well with the traditional village of Aguafria Board Leadership over time, and I just want to commend you on doing it in a way that bridges county and what we regularly do on a basis, and how communities think, and being a bridge person. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair, with that, I will move to pass a resolution establishing La Canyada de los Alamos Planning Committee and authorizing a community planning process for the community of La Canyada de los Alamos.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Johnson. We have a second by Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Resolution number?
Item 6A is Resolution Number 2025091.
091, thank you very much. Item B, approval of amendment number three to agreement number 2023-0010-CSD/cw with La Familia Medical Center. And we are hearing from Jennifer Romero. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jennifer Romero, Santa Fe County Community Services Deputy Director, and I am joined here today by Jasmine Mills, who is the La Familia Chief Marketing and Development Officer. The Community Services Department requests approval of amendment number three to our agreement with La Familia Medical Center to increase compensation by $746,000 for a total contract sum not to exceed $2,984,200 inclusive of NMGRT, and also to extend the term through August 30 of 2026. In August 2022, Santa Fe County entered into agreement number 2023 with La Familia, sorry, 2023-0010 with La Familia Medical Center pursuant to the hospital and healthcare services exemption to provide primary care navigation services to county residents, leveraging the Connect Network to address social determinants of health. And the current agreement is set to expire in August of 2025. Both CSD and the contractor wish to continue these essential services. La Familia Medical Center has served Santa Fe County residents since 1972 and has participated in the Connect Network since its inception in 2017. To date, this contract has provided primary care and navigation services to more than 4,176 individuals. The proposed amendment increases compensation to ensure service continuity through FY26. We recommend to approve amendment number three with La Familia Medical Center to increase the compensation and extend the term in order to continue services, and we will both stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Green, and then Commissioner Johnson, Hughes?
We'll get, we'll get there. Hi, thank you so much. Love what you guys do. It was great to meet with you a couple days ago to talk about what's going on with some of your work here in the community. I do want to point out that you guys also stretch up to the Espanola community, and so you not only do stuff here in the city, but in the county, and in Espanola, and all sorts of areas. So I really appreciate the breadth of what you do, and thanks for serving our community in healthcare. Very important.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you for coming and visiting with us last week.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Yes, how is this funding compared to the past five years? Are we increasing it?
It is the same amount, sir.
The same amount?
Yes, sir. It's the same amount over the last, it, it, as it was last year and over the last couple of years.
Okay. So are you going to need more when Medicare gets cut, Medicaid gets cut?
Yes, sir. We are, quite honestly, we're looking at how that is going to be impacted, especially not only because of Medicaid, but also because there is an executive order that we are waiting to hear, which may require us as a federally qualified health center to require certification of U.S. citizenship.
Good heavens.
And we have 44% of our patients are uninsured.
Uninsured. But some of those are also, I assume, immigrants?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Will you keep us informed of challenges you face so that we can somehow help you out?
We will definitely do that, and thank you for asking that, for, you know, asking us to do that. We will be in touch.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to keep a healthy community as best we can, and so I would support helping you more if we need to.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kokari Stone?
Thank you. I just want to echo the sentiments of the investment in FQHCs, particularly La Familia, and I'm really glad we also have an annex and building there in District 2, near the Nancy Rodriguez Center. And I just want to mention the historical significance and support that we continue to be the safety net. Community health centers, as you know, but maybe others in the room don't, were birthed out of the Civil Rights Movement and the War on Poverty, and it actually came out of the Economic Opportunity Act of 1965, I believe. And we know that Senator Kennedy, who I worked for, as well as the heroes of community health movements, all launched it in the most high-need, low-resourced communities, and something that sustained it over 60 years has been this 51% requirement that there be patient representation on the Board. Most of our health centers, and I think La Familia far exceeds that, over 75%, 80%, some 90%. There's also been, in the books, through constitutional law, the FQHCs serve all regardless of immigration status, race, language spoken. They would have to change that constitutional law, and I support that the county work with our attorney our Attorney General and the Governor to push back on that, because that's been part, no matter what presidency exists, that has never gone away. So I just wanted to echo that and make sure we as a county continue to support you. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner.
Thank you Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, just briefly, I wanted to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Hughes. This is a time of transition and change, and I want you to know that the county commission supports you.
Thank you so very much. Thank you each and every one of you for the work that you do and the support you provide to our community. I don't know if you realize that La Familia has the highest percentage of uninsured patients of all the FQHCs in the state in comparison to others. So your support is essential to the health of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you sincerely, and it's with gratitude that I open for a motion to approve.
I will make the motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Green.
I second it.
We have a second from Commissioner Kukari Stone. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for your good work sincerely, and thank you Ms. Romero for bringing this forward.
Thank you so much.
Item C, request approval of amendment number one to agreement number 2024-0257-CSD with Santa Fe Recovery Center, increasing compensation by $450,000 for a total contract sum of $750,000 inclusive of New Mexico GRT. Go ahead Alex. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon Commissioner Bustamante, Commissioners. Madam Chair, the Community Services Department requests approval of amendment number one to agreement number 2024-0257 with Santa Fe Recovery Center to increase compensation by $450,000 for a total contract sum not to exceed $750,000 inclusive of NMGRT, and to extend the term through December 9th, 2026. The amendment continues social and medically managed withdrawal services for Santa Fe County residents ages 18 and over with substance use disorders. In December 2024, Santa Fe County entered into an agreement with, agreement number 2024-0257 with CSD with Santa Fe Recovery Center, following a competitive seal proposal process to provide social and medically managed withdrawal management services. Services are provided at the county's 25-bed co-ed detoxification facility, La Sala Center, located at 2052 Galisteo, where Santa Fe Recovery Center and the Crisis Triage Center, currently managed by New Mexico Solutions, are co-located. Under the agreement, Santa Fe Recovery Center serves adults, adult residents of Santa Fe County, using assessment criteria established jointly with the county and coordinates transitions from La Sala and the county adult detention facility. Santa Fe Recovery Center must report the number of clients by referred source. Funding for the contract is provided through the local DWI funds generated from alcohol excise tax collected by the New Mexico Department of Taxation and Revenue and administered by the Department of Finance and Administration. The DWI Grant Council has awarded $300,000 to support alcohol detoxification services in Santa Fe County in fiscal year 2026. The same allocation is projected for fiscal year 27. The $150,000 balance will be encumbered in the next fiscal year to cover expenses through the contract term, or the contract amended or terminated if actual funding is less or discontinued. We are recommending the approval of amendment number one to agreement number 2024-0257 with Santa Fe Recovery Center to increase compensation by $450,000 for a total contract sum not to exceed $750,000 inclusive of New Mexico GRT, and extend the term of the agreement through December 9th, 2026, and delegate authority to the county manager to sign the purchase order. With that, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Ms. Stacy Martin from Santa Fe Recovery Center is here with us, and we stand before you to answer any questions you all may all have.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Dominguez or for, I apologize?
Ms. Stacy Martin.
Stacy Barton. Right, thank you. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
I just want to thank you Mr. Dominguez, and Stacy, thank you for being here. When Commissioner Johnson and I visited La Sala, there was a lot of discussion around it, it's already outgrown itself, and I just wanted maybe some update from you or a future outlook on where we stand and how this funds will support it, or where the need might be in the near future. Thanks.
Thank you Commissioner. Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. Yes, it was a delightful conversation to talk about the need and the expanding need of providing these sorts of services. Our focus has been on the Warner property to divert from the Midtown Campus, our men's program. So I don't have an update on where we are with detox services, although there has been some conversation with the county on looking at ways to use some new and upcoming county locations for the possibility of expanding much-needed detox services. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, thank you Ms. Martin, and I want to acknowledge the work of Dr. Basanta, who's also in the audience. I just want to thank you for your work. I was very impressed when Commissioner Kukari Stone and I toured the facility, and it's extremely important to have this in our community, and again, want to communicate our support to your mission.
Thank you Commissioner. I want to extend our gratitude as well for the partnership with the county. Without the county's partnership, our endeavors wouldn't be possible, and we would see many more people who need emergency room services not have a place to go, diverting into our detox program, and we're also proud of the work that we do in helping to curb homelessness because of our work. So without your partnership, it wouldn't be possible. Thank you.
Thank you sincerely Commissioner Green.
Thank you Madam Chair. Thank you both. So the 25 beds, are those pretty much full every day? Where are you at in terms of?
It depends on the day. There's certainly need. So part of the question that Commissioner Stone had around the building was in that conversation, we noted that the beds are split by gender, so portioned by male or female or whatever gender incoming persons identify with, and because of that, it's often difficult to be at 100% capacity. So its current configuration doesn't serve that, but certainly if it were configured differently, we would be.
Okay. And then you have the other facility that I toured a couple, maybe it's over a year ago now. How's that coming?
It's coming along. We're on target to meet the deadlines for the Warner property, and I would invite you to come again to see how we've, how the building has changed, and of course invite everyone. It was nice to see Commissioner Hughes at the property as well, not too long ago.
Well, when do you expect to open that?
In January.
Fantastic. Good job. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, just real briefly, what's the capacity of the Warner project?
The capacity of the Warner project is approximately 60% of what we have now, in part because we will not have room for our extended program. And our extended programming is growing with more housing. So we're looking at ways to expand that programming, not within the confines of Warner Avenue, but with bridge housing.
So how many people is that?
It'll be 45, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you. I have, did you have your hand up again? Have one constituent who let me know right when I was elected, to never let you go, to never let your organization go, to do what we can to assure that Santa Fe Recovery exists. And he passed a few weeks ago. And I feel that I'm compelled to share this now. I don't know that I would have normally, but I'm sincerely grateful for your work, your existence, never let you go, because you've made the difference in people's families' lives. So for that, thank you. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
And on that note, if I'm ready Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Please, thank you.
I make a motion to approve amendment number one to agreement number 2024-0257-CSD with Santa Fe Recovery Center, increasing compensation by $450,000 for a total contract sum of $750,000.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Kukari Stone to pass the approval. We have a second from Commissioner Green. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. You're not going anywhere because we're holding on to you.
I will make sure to pass that along to the team.
Please do. Thank you so much. All right. Onward to item D, request approval of the agreement between the Santa Fe County, County of Santa Fe and the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, ASME, New Mexico Council 18, referring to the bargaining unit as Local 1413M. And we will hear from Rachel and Valerie. Thank you.
Is that better?
There you go.
Okay. I'm pleased to be before you today accompanied by our HR Director to present to you a proposed new collective bargaining agreement for one of your six bargaining units. This is one of your smaller bargaining units. It is the unit that represents the staff in our medical unit at the adult detention facility. Their contract expired at the end of July. We have been working together diligently since May to negotiate a new contract. We had very productive and positive conversations about what should occur with the contract, and you will see in the memo, an exhibit that summarizes the various provisions that have been amended or proposed for amendment. The substantive changes are fairly minimal, but the wages were the primary focus of our discussions. And you'll see that for the members of the bargaining unit, the positions in the bargaining unit, excuse me, the pharmacy technician, LPN, RN, that the wages have increased in the neighborhood of 5.2% to 6.7% depending on the position. There are wages proposed for two positions that may be brought into this bargaining unit but are not yet in the bargaining unit, and those are the clinic nurses and the certified medication aide. We're before the Labor Board right now to find out whether they will grant permission for our joint effort to bring those positions into the bargaining unit. And if they do come into the bargaining unit, they would be covered by this contract if it's approved. We did significant comparison to competing medical services, including Presbyterian, Sebelac County, Torrance, MDC, St. Vincent's, and others, and there's a table that represents some of those comparisons in the memo, and found that the rates that we were able to agree to based on the funding we had available left us highly competitive for both the LPN and RN positions. And we stand for questions on the contract which would run from the adoption through the end of July in 2028. So it's a three-year contract.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Rachel or Valerie? Commissioner Green?
Thank you very much. You know, labor bargaining is not easy, and I appreciate the time and diligence that you guys do. This unit does very specialized work, which is really, you know, we have to always address that and show our appreciation there. It's tough enough to be a medical worker, specialized training and so on, and then it's super extra tough to work in a jail. So we need to make sure that we retain and manage that properly. So thanks for keeping that moving.
Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner. Anyone else? If not, do we have a motion?
I will make the motion. Requesting approval of an agreement between the County of Santa Fe and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, New Mexico Council 18. Yeah, there we go.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item D. Item 6D from Commissioner Green. We have a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven, we have no presentations. We have matters of public concern to be heard in 45, approximately 47 minutes. Good luck with that one dear. Good luck with that. All right. Matters from the county manager?
Thank you Chair Bustamante and Commissioners. You know, first, we are endeavoring to schedule a special BCC meeting for Thursday, September 4th, 2025 at 2:30 PM. This is to discharge the Board's ministerial duty to impose via written order the property tax rates that are certified to the Board by the Department of Finance and Administration. So to put the timeline in context, the Department of Finance and Administration is required to issue its written order by September 1st of each year, and counties in turn, Board of County Commissioners in turn are required to issue its own written order, formally imposing the certified tax rates within five days of receipt. Again, this should be a very short meeting. We don't anticipate, based upon past events, that it would take more than five to 15 minutes at the tops, and would encourage folks to participate remotely if necessary, and if that date and time pose particular problems, then we can again look to find an alternative, but just wanted to put the meeting time in context in terms of why there is some sense of timeliness to having this special meeting. Want to acknowledge that, you know, Labor Day is Monday, and want to, you know, acknowledge all the hard work that county staff do on day in and day out, and hope that they enjoy the day with their families or doing whatever it is that brings them joy outside of work. Finally, I did want to give the Board a heads up that, you know, we will be moving matters of public concern to the beginning of the agenda after opening business, beginning with our next regularly scheduled meeting. That is meant to be more convenient to the public while we do have a set starting time now at 3:45. Putting it at the beginning of the meeting will help ensure that, you know, folks can get in and out, but also that they'll be able to comment if they desire to on any action item on the agenda before action is taken, you know, by the Board. If there's any desire to discuss that further, I'd welcome feedback from the Board, but at least on a trial basis, we'll begin with the next meeting with that change so that we can move effectively and efficiently through the agenda and manage public comment. Those are the updates that I have. Thank you Chair and Commissioners.
Thank you Manager Schaefer. Issues from the county commissioners. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you Madam Chair. We have, of course, been very busy with a slew of proceedings regarding the Rancho Villas Solar facility, but I do have, if I can find it, one small item to report on, although I won't be able to provide much detail. I am pleased to report that the North Central Regional Transit District conducted an executive director search to replace Tony Mortalaro, who had been there for 20-plus years. We had a day-long interview process. What was it? Who knows at this point, but it was sometime last week. It was very interesting and nice to meet various candidates. We did extend an offer to a very, I would say, highly qualified and dynamic applicant, and we are optimistic that that person will accept. So more soon, but that is an exciting development for an important entity like the NCRTD. And we'll see you all at the Zobra.
Thank you Commissioner. Commissioner Kukari Stone?
Thank you Chair Bustamante. This will be short. I just want to thank Mr. Leandro Cordova, who's here, and Mr. Snyder, as well as Kimby Hill, and the whole Public Works team. I shared part of my quarterly Public Works time, there's Mr. Snyder, with Aguafreya Village Traditional Community Board, and it was amazing what you can cover when you all sit down together and kind of eliminated calls and what are the updates, but I, I think- But I think our Public Works and all these projects that we talk about that keep getting put in the hopper, we're seeing progress. And I think the community is happy to see that, whether it's sewers, sidewalks, cleaning up after storms, and Nancy Rodriguez Community Center, the list goes on. And so I just want to put a shout out, but also to the local leadership. Also thanking Commissioner Hughes, the community services team, as well as the housing team. For the first time, we're coming together, at least my time here, and really talking about how do we start planning for long-term supportive housing for persons living and struggling with substance use and mental illness? We had a very productive, almost two-hour meeting. And I think there's lots of opportunities presenting themselves, a very clear leadership action role for the county to take in terms of putting this forward. And I look forward to also continue collaborations with our city council and other stakeholders around this. I had a successful meeting with the Dean of the School of Architecture and Design at UNM. And one of the ideas, some folks who I've been having platicas or discussions with who are without housing, is to have a place where people can charge their phones, where people can check the emails besides the downtown library, the south side library, where they can also store their belongings. And interesting enough, Albuquerque and the Berna Leo, but the city of Albuquerque are already doing this. They have designed these charging stations. And so I'm looking forward to having future conversations with that. And I think there's some, as we're doing long-term planning, there is some low-hanging fruit where the county can play a role in really alleviating some of the burden and suffering and challenges that comes with being without housing. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hughes?
Just a few things. Of course, the permanent supportive housing project is moving ahead with Commissioner Kokari Stone. I'm very glad to have her support on that, and of course, all the staff. I want to mention that Churchill Road has been asking for a water line for like forever. But I think we finally figured out maybe how to get it to them. Rena Chapansky wants to put a little bit of money, state money toward it. Of course, there's other communities, neighborhoods right around it that will also need it. So we'll include others and perhaps figure out a way to finance it so that they can pay for it over time, not all at once. So that we're moving forward with. Spur Ranch Road, another project in the District 5. Spur Ranch Road, of course, used to be a driveway into a ranch, turned into a major highway to all sorts of developments. And it's mostly a disaster, with very few improvements. They have a road association, road. They are currently filling out the application to be, apply for us to adopt the road. And that is a process. I think that we will need to, according to Ryan Ward anyway, we will need to change our rules a little bit to make it possible. So while this group is sort of leading the way, it may lead the way to make it easier for other communities to get their roads adopted. And finally, there's going to be an El Dorado Town Hall in September, mostly about projects, roads and stuff there. And the Bulk Water Station going out Route 14, just generating a lot of questions. I don't know if you're getting those, Camille, but, um, Commissioner Bustamante, I got lots of question, why are they putting up fire hydrants here, this and that, so. But that's going in, and that'll be done, I think, by the end of the year. So that's going to be a big help to people whose wells are running dry. They don't have to drive so far and compete with commercial developers for water. They can fill up their trucks and go. And that's it for District 5.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Green?
Pardon me. Thank you, Madam Chair. Some constituent requests that are, have popped up. A request for looking at paving portions of County Road 84. Staff regularly grades it, but it rains and it gets messy. And so yesterday, of course, they graded it, and last night it rained. And sure enough, this morning at 7 o'clock in the morning, I had somebody saying, "Great job, now do it again." So part of that request becomes, let's look at maybe a more permanent solution with some drainage and some permanent paving on there. Additionally, request for some of the Tono Road area to receive water, similar to the Churchill Road area. So there's a lot of those projects that maybe we need to sort of have all of them thrown on the table and learn how to process this, like roads. And all of the process for requests seem to be similar. And we could all learn something and enable and empower our communities to know the process that that might be able to work through. Fiesta's is coming up in about 10 days, and I will be there for the kickoff on Friday. And I'll go march in the historical hysterical parade. A little notification for three of us up here. Sadly, two of us weren't included because you weren't Commissioners yet, but I went to the ribbon cutting or the champagne bottle smashing of christening of the Zebra monument at the entrance to Fort Marcy Park on Sunday night. And three of the current county commissioners, but all five of the last year's county commission have memorial bricks on there. So you should go check out your bricks. You know, we have been, yeah, you missed it, you gotta, yeah. So, but there's still an opportunity to buy four more bricks. So you could come in late, and I bet you you could, Ray would probably pull it off for you. But it's a nice little piece of art at the entrance over there. It's pretty technicolor, has three different time capsules in there. So hopefully, all of us are around for 25 years from now. Hopefully, some of us are around for 50 years from now. And I can't imagine that any of us are going to be around for 75 years from now, but it'll be pretty amazing. And then lastly, about an hour ago, I, as threatened and promised, I filed my candidacy for mayor. So I had 750 signatures, 372 electronic, or on paper, and 380 on electronically. We can talk about that process if you like offline. But it was great to meet lots of constituents out there all over the city. And I got to meet a lot of your own constituents because I'm meeting people from outside of my district now. So you've got good constituents too. So thanks, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner. And lastly, the only two things. I left the Suama meeting on Thursday to go to the PFAS community discussion last Thursday. And it was interesting that we had just left Suama talking about waste disposition. Topic that came up from a constituent, and I've since discussed this with Manager Schaefer, but I think we need to see how this will be managed within our authority and how to ensure that we're protecting community health through the environment. There are people who have the filters on their households now, or some of them just countertop. And the recommendation for the disposition was to just throw it into the trash, throw it into the landfill, which just sort of returns the issue. And we have an opportunity to not be senseless and to whatever end, to have a discussion with our committee. The state was at the meeting, so this was a community conversation with Representative Chandler and two representatives from the New Mexico Environment Department. And the question came up from a community member saying, "How good is it for me to just turn around and filter it out of my water, but then make it available for the aquifer down the road?" It's not regulated. Hazardous waste isn't regulated household. There are rules that waste reception facilities can make about what they accept and what they can't, understanding what the hazards are and how, once it gets to a solid waste management entity and what the requirements for management there are to be understood better for those of us who are sitting on Suama and will bring it back to this commission. But it just seems like a mistake, and we need to find a way to rectify. Don't just create something else in the environment. So that happened. That happened. So you know, that happened. The other thing that I'll say about something that happened a long time ago, and I'm grateful that we have something as lovely as the Zobra or as devastating as the Zobra for people who are afraid of the Zobra. But one thing that I heard a lot of last year, and this year I feel compelled to share my concern regarding its availability to the people who live here, the public in Santa Fe County. You know, growing up, literally, I sat on that grass with my grandparents, who were well close to their 70s at that time. They seemed ancient, I'm pretty close to that now. But the fact is, to have them on that grass in today's environment, we wouldn't see it. I wouldn't dare have walked either of them into that crowd the way it is. It's not the most safe situation, but it's less available to families and their little kids. And it used to be we'd sit, eat tamales. I remember when Kentucky Fried Chicken was a big deal that year. But it's that type of thing that's really lost. And I really regret that the expansion of the announcement of it has gone into Albuquerque. There are billboards, Sandia Casino is a cosponsor. So what do we say to the people who've, you know, lived in this community and who really got to celebrate that, you know? Stay home because the traffic's going to be a nightmare. I don't know, you know, we just, we have opportunities to do things to protect what's available to our community. And I hope that when the decision is in front of us, we will make wiser decisions about how and what we do to make sure that things are available to those who have known it for generations and then don't have a safe venue for them anymore. That's all that I have. Other elected officials online? No other elected officials online? Do we have matters from the county attorney?
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I'm seeking a motion for the Board to go into executive session to discuss the acquisition or disposal of real property or water rights as allowed by Section 10151H8 of the Open Meetings Act. And the three items to be discussed are set forth in today's amended agenda.
Thank you, Attorney Boyd. Do we hear a motion to adjourn for executive session?
I will make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the four items that... Did you list all four items?
No, I didn't want to read them all out because they're set forth in item 11A of the agenda, and it's three items as the Board has amended the agenda to eliminate number four.
Gotcha. Yes. Okay, so the three items. Thank you very much.
Give a motion by Commissioner Green?
Second, I just have a question. Are you going to come out at 3:45 to hear public concern and then go back in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Second?
All in.
Roll call.
Have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Adam Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Justin Green?
Yes.
Commissioner Hank Hughes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lisa Kokari Stone?
Yes.
And Chair Camilla Bustamante?
Yes. We'll adjourn, and we will be back by 3:45. Go back into executive if necessary. Go back into executive if necessary. (Audio cuts out)
Motion to come out of executive session stating that we only talked about the three items that we went in there. And we did not make any decisions that we will not report out here. So, thanks.
Second?
Yes, we do have some.
One, one, two, actually two things, Chair, Commissioners. One, I want to make the record clear that in addition to discussions of the acquisition of real property or water rights, the Board also meant to discuss threatened or pending litigation in which Santa Fe County is or may become a participant, as allowed by Section 10151 H7 of the Open Meetings Act. And as discussed, I would be seeking a motion to approve the resolution that I distributed to you all.
Yes, if we're ready for that motion. We got to come out of executive session first.
You said we did not make any decisions.
Well, we will make a decision in a minute.
So, we have a motion to come out of executive session stating that we have not made any decisions other than one action item that will be heard after we approve getting back into session from Commissioner Green. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Green, Hughes, aye. And the next motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution to grant the county manager and the county manager's designee the authority to assign any amendments to Water Rights Purchase Agreement, County Agreement Number 2023-0198-PW/BT, and Replacement Water Rights Agreement, County Agreement Number 2023-0199-PW/BT, and to sign all other documents necessary to acquire water rights from Jordan C. in Beverly Kay Pareo, and Jimmy C. and Kristi Pareo, and to convey such water rights to the El Paisano LLC.
Second?
We have a motion from Commissioner Green for item number, what number was that? Number two? I'm sorry, 11B. Okay. Actually, it's not 11B, it's 11-1. 11-1. For the disposition of water rights from Commissioner Green. We have a second from Commissioner Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we will now go to public comment. Do we have anyone online? We have one person online. They have three minutes.
Do you want?
Oh, we have two people. And we have someone in the chambers. Thank you. All right. So, let's hear from the individual in the chambers first. Thank you.
Look like they need some company, so I came. Good afternoon and hello again. My name is Sid Monroe. Speaking on behalf of the residents of Area 1B who submitted the petition you just again discussed in executive session today. We respectfully ask that you approve an ordinance to permit Area 1B residents to exist freely as constituents of the county without continued threat and oversight by the city. We simply ask that you continue to give careful and deliberate consideration to our petition. If we can help you to help us, please reach out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Monroe. Online?
Chair Bustamante, we do have one speaker online. Jared, will you please unmute your mic?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Jared O'Shell. I'm a resident of Area 1B. Let's see. In 2008, the city and county entered into a legally binding agreement, or the 2008 Annexation and Settlement Agreement. This agreement had a five-year term to annex a number of areas surrounding the city of Santa Fe at that time. In 2012, the city drafted up an extension for another five years. Before the 2018 deadline, Mayor Weber was advised that the expiration date was coming up, and they did nothing about it. They have not drafted any plans, nor have they extended this written deadline. It's now over seven years past due to annex with little less than three years to provide all the services to all the areas on the full terms of this legally binding agreement. It took the year, it took the city over a year to fix the West Alameda, and three years to improve Guadalupe Street, if you can call it that. They annexed the airport road and are asking for bond money to improve it or fix it. They are delinquent on services elsewhere. The city will not be able to run a marathon when we see them having trouble walking. The county surrendered land use authority to the city in an extraterritorial land use authority, which cites the 2008 agreement as, this is a continued nightmare dealing with taxation without representation, and based on a very defunct settlement agreement. If that time, if the timeframe to annex us has passed, why do they then use the same paperwork to claim authority over us? It doesn't seem very credible for the city to break their written word, if you, if you will, to expect their written words to carry on in the form of an ELUA. We do not have a council person representing us. This, and this is bullying. The mayor has contempt for us, as shown by his actions and misrepresentations about us. As I mentioned before, I have been a driver in this effort to collect signatures. I have spoken to more than two-thirds of the area's residents, and it's not a question of close, it's near unanimous that we want to stay in the county, but much better be incorporated into the village, which gives us community and a clear path for services in the future. We have noted the council discussing this in executive sessions, and presumably due to threats of litigation. Please remember that this is the will of the people who live here, most of us for a long time, and a few for many generations. The sections of this agreement that still stand are in jeopardy, such as zoning and services. Why should anything signed by the city and county be ignored, including provisions stating no further lawsuits arising from this agreement? But one expired part of this designated as an area to be annexed still holds all the water. Look here, but not here, and here, and here on this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else. Our last item on the agenda is to adjourn. Except, we do have announcements, and Commissioner Johnson wanted to announce something that we did have at SWAMA.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I neglected to mention just two items of community interest that we learned about at the SWAMA meeting. First is that there are free brush drop-off days, September 5th and 6th, at the El Dorado-Stanleya-Hacona transfer stations. So, folks who have green waist should feel free to take that. And then also, the statewide Tosno Mas event is September 20th. It's a great opportunity to join community groups who work on various projects throughout the city and county. And I just wanted to put that on everyone's radar. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further announcements? Commissioner Green?
Just to clarify, is it still called Tosno Mas, and it's not breaking bad habits? They didn't, they didn't lose that?
SWAMA did not recognize.
SWAMA did not recognize. Okay, all right, all right. The marketing didn't work that far. Okay, good.
Maybe next year.
Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn and enjoy fiestas.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nobody's opposed. Then, see you later, instigators.